Good morning to you all ladies and gentlemen from Zimba Town Council. My name is Asim Kondashadwe, I am Deputy Commission Secretary, Local Government Services Commission.
Thank you so much, Secretary.
Good morning Chair, good morning Honorable Members, good morning Zimba Town Council. My name is Maxo Chideka from the Office of the Clerk.
Thank you so much person, good morning Mr Simunga and your team. I am Chidimboi Elijah from the Office of the Clerk of National Assembly and you are welcome. Thank you Honorable Members, starting with the Honorable Member for Siavonga.
Chair, good morning, good morning Permanent Witnesses, morning Zimba Town Council. My name is Mulunda, Darius Member Parliament for Siavonga constituency.
Honorable MP for Kaumbwe.
Thank you Chair, good morning Zimba Town Council. I am Honorable Dr Aaron Manza, Member of Parliament for Kaumbwe constituency in Petoke District of the Eastern Province, you must welcome to your committee.
We have Honorable Member for Dundumwezi following us online, Honorable MP for Dundumwezi.
Chair, thank you so very much and Chair is and good morning everyone, my name is Simeb Edgann, MP for Dundumwezko Nekti from Dundumwezko constituency. Zimba Council, compliments of the season and you are welcome.
Thank you so much. Witness, my name is Christopher Shakafuswa, Member of Parliament for Mandevu constituency of Lusaka district, I am the Vice Chairperson of the Local Government Accounts Committee. You are welcome to the committee and Mandevu constituency which hosts the National Assembly. I now wish to invite you, Council Secretary, to make your submission.
Thank you so very much Chair. Writing on your permission, allow me to present the memorandum for the audit of Zimba Town Council as cited in the Audit General Report on the General Operations for the financial year ended 1st December 2023, Paragraph 113 and Appendix 1, 2, 6, 28, 29 and 33. Page 2 Chair. Query on budget, income and expenditure during the period under review, the council budgeted to receive grants from the Minister of Local Government and Rural Development?
Allow me to just guide that you go straight to the cause of the query, action taken and remedial measures implemented.
Thank you so very much Chair, the action taken. The local authority wishes to inform the committee that the overall budget performance stood at ninety-seven percent from a collection of thirty million two hundred and forty-four nine forty-seven against a budgeted amount of thirty million six hundred and five three seventy-four. Furthermore, the performance from the local generated revenue stood at eighty-seven percent from a collection of three million three hundred and eighty-two zero four-two-one against a budgeted amount of three million eight hundred and eighty-four eight ninety-four. However, the local authority underperformed in four revenue lines where the collection efficiency stood at sixty-seven percent. As highlighted in the table Chair, local taxes, the authority to submit follow-ups have been correct the outstanding amount of two hundred and seventy-six zero sixty-eight in local taxes using the public address system among other strategies and hundred and eight and five seventy-eight. Truck yard parking fees amounting to three hundred and two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four against a budget of two hundred thousand for on this uncollected one ninety-four were reported to be written off the books as they are unbillable form of income and eighty thousand four hundred and ninety-one to be recovered through legal action. Commercial ventures, the local brought to the Local Government Service Commission to request for commercial ventures whose deployment to the council has resulted in a profit of fourteen thousand five hundred and nineteen seventeen in the first quarter twenty twenty-four. Remedial measures, the council will endeavor to employ systems such as digitalization of revenue collection to enhance collection efficiency and also exploring other sources of revenue. The local authority shall endeavor to write to the Minister of Local Government and Rural Development in instances where the Local Government Equalization Fund is based to the local authorities less than what has what was budgeted for as be guided from the Ministry. Query on annual performance of the council Chair, action taken. The local authority wishes to submit to the committee that follow-ups have been made an outstanding amount of two hundred and seventy-six zero sixty-eight in local taxes using the public address system among other strategies have solved and so far have managed to collect one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and five seventy-eight away. Fees and charges, the local authority wrote to the Local Government Services Commission to request for officers run the commercial ventures whose deployment to the council has resulted into the council collecting truck yard parking fees amounting to three hundred and two thousand nine eighty-four against a budget of three hundred thousand in the year twenty twenty-four. Levis and collected levis amounting to hundred and thirty-four one ninety-four were reported to the council to be written off the books of the council as they are unbillable form of income and eighty thousand four hundred and ninety-one to be recovered through legal action. Further, the local authority has engaged the work development committees and revenue agents in the revenue collection program at the newly constructed checkpoints around the district. Additionally, a revenue task force has been formed to enhance compliance. On commercial ventures, the local authority wrote to the Local Government Services Commission to request for officers to run the commercial ventures whose deployment to the council has resulted into the council collecting truck yard parking fees amounting to three hundred and two nine eighty-four against a budget of three hundred thousand in the year twenty twenty-four. Remedial measures taken, the council endeavor to employ systems such as this digitalization of revenue, collection to enhance collection efficiency and also exploring other sources of revenue. I would like to Chair refer the Honorable House to Appendix A where there are receipts for local taxes, payment vouchers for public announcements twenty twenty-four ledgers for fees and charges, extra two minutes for finance general purposes committee meeting on write-offs for uncollected levis and also the first quarter profit and loss account for commercial venture revenue agent agreements, letters to task to task force members and letters for commercial ventures for commercial managers, I beg your pardon Chair. On query on deliverable targets outputs not achieved. Chair, action taken on page, on page seven Chair. Action taken, subprogram, social economic planning. The remaining two community engagements were conducted in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. The delay was due to financial constraints. However, the department will be working in collaboration with other sections within the department in order to cut down on costs. Under special planning, number of capacity building meetings held. The target was not met due to financial constraints. In order to achieve the target, the physical section will work in collaboration with other sections. Number of PDC meetings attended, the PDC meetings are actually organized at provincial level. Number of peer educators trained under social economic planning subprogram. The activity was at, was, was not at hundred percent due to financial constraints, however, the local authority will work in collaboration with key stakeholders such as DHO, Wojebuga in addressing these challenges. Further, the local authority will ensure that a certain percentage from all the contracts awarded is reserved for HIV AIDS and other cross-cutting issues. Still under social economic planning subprogram, number of cross-cutting sensitization meetings. The target was not met due to financial constraints. In order to achieve this, the section is working in collaboration with other departments and sections. On public health as a subprogram, no animal carcasses inspected. At the time of audit, fifty animals were captured as being inspected, however, the target was met at a total of two thousand five hundred carcasses as a total of two thousand five hundred carcasses were inspected. Pest control, number of public places sprayed. The activity was not done because there was no outbreak. Solid waste management, proportion of solid waste collected couldn't couldn't achieve hundred percent due to the constant breakdown of the tractor due to constant breakdown of the tractor, however, the tractor was repaired and waste is collected twice per day. Support to indigent people under subprogram, proportion of vulnerable people supported. The activity is done by Department of Social Affairs which had not yet resolved at, at the time of the audit. Number awareness programs, the activity is done by Department of Social Affairs which had not yet been resolved at the time of audit. Building regulations as a subprogram, number of buildings inspected. The target was not met due to inadequate transport and lack of buildings inspector at the time of audit, however, a development control task force has been put in place to conduct development control activities and have repaired and have repaired the vehicles. Hundred percent developers adhering to building regulations. The council conducted building inspections and the report is attached. Furthermore, a development control task force has been formed and the vehicle is attached for deployment control. In the year under review, the local authority had the collection efficiency of hundred and eighteen point five percent in building inspection fees. Remedial measures, the local authority endeavors to set realistic targets to ensure that at least eighty-five percent of all planned targets are met. Chair, allow me to refer the committee to Appendix B where we have minutes on sensitization on ITP, minutes on community engagement the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, finance, human source and general papers committee minutes, the PWD ISAS committee minutes, the audit committee minutes and the ordinary council minutes. Solid waste report, meat inspection report and the buildings inspections report and also receipts and payments. On the query on budget expenditure, Chair, action taken, the local authority wishes to submit to the committee that the expenditure funds were for ongoing activities worth hundred and six thousand three hundred and forty-nine. Account maintenance amounting to two, two, two thousand one hundred and fifty-four and the quarter three thousand one hundred and eleven reserved for restocking the sum up shop. The local authority further wishes to inform the committee that the funds have since been spent. Remedy measures, the local authority will endeavor to complete all its planned activities and completed within the financial year. Chair, allow me to also refer the August House to Appendix Six for payment vouchers and, and bank statements for the process of evidence. Query on failure to dispose of unserviceable motor vehicles. Chair, action taken, the local authority would like to inform the committee that the disposal committee has since been established and also that there was a report that was submitted to the Finance and General Purposes Committee which resolved that the unserviceable vehicles be disposed of. Remedial measures, the local authority to endure that the council assets are regularly updated to ascertain their lifespan and take action as may be required. Chair, allow me to refer the Honorable House to Appendix Number D where their, their attachments for extracts of minutes of finance and general purposes committee and also appointment letters for the disposal committee members. Query on failure to settle statutory and other obligations. Action taken, the committee may wish to know that the local authorities are able to meet its wage bill at gross because of limited resources because of limited revenue base and local government equalization fund. The committee may wish to know that in order to address this challenge, the local authority wrote to the Minister of Local Government and Rural Development to consider an upward adjustment of the Local Government Equalization Fund for Zimba Town Council to be able to meet statutory obligations. The committee may wish to know that the local authority has come up with several revenue enhancement strategies and has since made payments in the year twenty twenty-four to Zulau amounting to hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-six point fifty-seven away. Also to Nima, seventy-three thousand two hundred and seventy-nine sixteen way and Lassif was deducted at source amounting to hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three point ten away. Remedial, remedy measure, the local authority will endure to come up with more revenue enhancement strategies and will continue to engage the means of local government and rural development to increase the allocation of Local Government Equalization Fund. Further, will continue making payments towards the statutory obligations. Chair, allow me to also refer the Honorable House to Appendix Number E for evidence supporting the same where we have attached ledgers for Lassif, ledgers for Nima, Zulau and letter to means of Local Government and Rural Development for upward adjustment of Equalization Fund. Chair, the query on failure to settle staff obligations. The action taken, the local authority wishes to submit that the outstanding staff obligations amounting to ninety-three thousand two hundred and twenty-six was in respect of committed leave days value owed to council employees who have since been transferred to other stations. The local authority further wishes to inform the committee that the committed leave days values have been reconverted to leave days and transferred to the officers in their respective local authorities. Remedial measure, council is encouraging officers to proceed on leave once they accumulate leave days. Chair, allow me also to refer the August House to Appendix F for letters of transfer of personal files. Query on failure to establish firefighting service. Action taken Chair, the local authority wishes to inform the committee that the council has failed to establish to establish the firefighting services due to limited financial resources. However, the local authority would like to inform the committee that Zimba Town Council has trained one officer under firefighting services and the council requested for officers through the staff returns and the Local Government Services Commission has since appointed two officers. The local authority further wishes to inform the committee that the council has been engaging the sister councils in the interim to provide firefighting equipment. Remedial, remedy measures, the local authority will continue to engage the means of Local Government and Rural Development and other cooperating partners to consider establishing the fighting station, the firefighting station and equipment using other sources of funding like the Confluence Development Fund. Chair, allow me to refer the Honorable House to Appendix G for appointment letters of the firefighting officers. Chair, I wish to submit.
Thank you so much Council Secretary, I now invite points of qualifications from the honorable members. Honorable Dr Manza.
Thank you Chair. Of the performance of your targets. And the last item is percentage of developers adhering to building regulations. You have also referred as to Appendix B. When I look at Appendix B in collaboration with your submission on page nine, I've got two questions. One, the question that I would like you to seek clarity is on on page nine, your, your target was to look at hundred developers and you achieved zero. So the variance is hundred. But in your the reasons column, you're saying the council conducted building inspections and the report is attached. Further, a developed control task, you're, you're saying that you achieved hundred and eighteen point five percent. How could you achieve hundred and eighteen percent when you conducted none of the targeted inspection on building regulations? The second question, if we go to Appendix B there is a buildings inspection report, B5. They are almost, they are said each developers that Zimba Town Council inspected. When I look at the general findings is that almost all the people that, that you found developing their premises had no building plans, had no land ownership documents. They had no development consent from the council. Almost hundred percent and you ended up actually giving notices to stop the development. Others, you've given them demand notices. What I want to find out is from this conclusion, the findings that people have been developing, you've, you've actually explained the progress of construction in different stages, others at foundation stages, at the at the Gabor Lev or something like that, they have committed the funds and the, but what is your conclusion in, in form of why people in Zimba can go ahead, commit their funds? And you found some places that people, they finished the construction and they are living there, but they have no ownership documents. And so where is the problem? And what is the way forward? That out of the thirty-eight that you inspected, many of them could adhere to these statutory requirements for owning a land for development, thank you.
Thank you so much Council Secretary.
Thank you Chair, with your indulgence, allow me to call upon Director Planning to elaborate on the same.
Director Planning. Thank you so much Chair. Indeed, we do acknowledge the concern that the audit has raised at the time of audit. But I wish to indicate to the August House that the challenge that we've had as Zimba Town Council is that most land available for us is under traditional, in traditional, untraditional leadership. Hence making it difficult for us to conduct development control activities. However, the council went ahead and went ahead and lobbied for land through his Royal Highnesses, our Royal Highnesses within the district who indeed gave us that pieces of land to plan and also to, to, to manage. So the hundred and eighteen point five collection efficiency is due to development task force team that was formed to control developments taking place in our district. Thank you Chair.
Honorable Dr Manza. The hundred and eighteen is explaining, is in contradiction with your you indicated that you targeted to inspect hundred and then achieved zero, from the table on page nine, it is very clear that you targeted nine, I mean you targeted a hundred and you achieved zero. So how can you achieve zero? And then your explanation is that you achieved the hundred and eighteen percent.
Thank you Chair. So the hundred percent indeed was our target and what the audit has captured was zero. However, a task force team was already in place. No wonder the council managed to collect that amount or the collection efficiency of one hundred and eighteen point five. So the one hundred and eighteen is in terms of the funds that we managed to realize after conducting the development control activities.
So this in short was conducted after the audit?
Yes Chair.
So why have you failed to respond that at the time of audit indeed we had done zero, but after this, this is what we put in place and have since achieved this. Don't crack.
Thank you Chair, much obliged. The situation is that at the time of the audit, what was there in terms of performance was zero. But the task force was still being constituted. So at the time of that audit, the record was showing zero. So that after the audit, the exercise continued to the time that we were able to achieve hundred and eighteen point five percent, thank you Chair.
Can you kindly amend the, your response in the report? So that is, it's in line with your verbal submission because what you are saying now is different from what is in the report. Yes Council Secretary.
Thank you Chair, we take note, given time, we'll have that amended, thank you Chair.
You can ask for an amendment just here so that it's corrected.
Thank you Chair, we ask for an amendment. Just at the moment.
How must the response read?
On the corner Chair. The audit exercise and managed to therefore achieve hundred and eighteen point five.
The same also Honorable Dr Manza, you want to guide because please go.
Just ask, just more clarification. Here on page nine, you're talking over this hundred and eighteen point five percent, is it the number of adhering to building regulations? Or the fees that dead because there's of course that are related to developmental control like planning, like fees for developing when they submit the plans and that kind of stuff. So we want clarity, this hundred and eighteen, is it a percentage of the fees? In terms of money or just the number of developers that you visited?
Yes Council Secretary.
Thank you Chair, allow me to call upon Director Planning to highlight on
Thank you, Chair. Allow me to call upon Director Planning to highlight on this.
Director Planning?
Thank you, Chair. So the one hundred and eighteen point five is the collection efficiency. These are the fees that we managed to collect after conducting the development control activities.
Okay, so out of that fees, we want to know how much? And because the developers that paid those fees, I guess they're the ones that are targeted, the hundred. Your target was hundred. So I guess you cut those fees from the same hundred developers. But in your inspection report, you have thirty-eight.
Thank you, Chair. Allow me to call upon Director Finance to highlight on this.
Director Finance?
Thank you very much, Chair. On the same Appendix B, I can refer the House Chair to Appendix B six that is on the attachments. I think it should be the last attachment. Among the attachments on Appendix B, we have B six there where we have attached our receipt and the payments up to December for twenty twenty-three. Under fees and charges, under fees and charges, you can go to a serial number or code number fifteen two zero zero three, where we have shown the amount for building inspection. That is the budgeted amount of ten thousand compared to the actual amount. So when you find a percentage in terms of the collection amount, you'll be able to see that we actually overcollected in terms of what we budgeted. Hence the one hundred and eighteen percent, Chair. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Mulunda? Your microphone?
The last page. I've seen, Chair, on Appendix twenty-nine, failure to settle staff obligations. I've seen ninety-three thousand two two six. So I wanted to find out from Zimba. If the local authority is struggling to settle this, it means the revenue base is really poor. So I wanted to find out what is your main revenue base? And how much do you collect in a year? Any idea if I can highlight?
Thank you, Council Secretary.
Thank you so much, Chair. Allow me to call upon Director Finance to highlight on the question raised. Thank you.
Please, Director Finance?
Thank you very much, Chair. So like we have indicators, indicated in most of the causes for the query with regards to performance. You have seen, Chair, that what we are highlighting in most cases as a challenge is the issue of revenue, Chair. So in terms of the major sources of revenue for Zimba Town Council, Chair, the major source is owners' rates. In terms of amounts, Chair, for the whole year, owners' rates, the total budget is actually four hundred and four thousand, Chair. When it comes to what is following, Chair, from other many sources of revenue, under fees and charges, what we have, Chair, is rentals from council properties. Those are billable revenues, Chair. Where the total budget is coming to about eight one thousand. We also have renters from the houses that the council built, Chair. The total revenue there, the whole year, is seventy-nine thousand two hundred. What follows after that, Chair, is under the same fees and charges. We have farm produce, Chair, where the total in terms of major sources is one hundred and forty thousand. So from those few examples, Chair, you are able to tell that in terms of what we are relying on with regards to locally generated revenues, Chair, we don't have maybe on a monthly basis clients who are able to pay maybe an amount more than even fifty thousand. What we depend upon, Chair, are these estimates. Estimates from maybe fish levy, just as an example, in terms of non-billable revenues, Chair.
Thank you so much. Before I call upon Honorable Mulunda, I wish to acknowledge the presence of the Member of Parliament for Zimba constituency. Honorable Imelda Muna Shabanu is joining us in the public gallery. You are welcome, Honorable. Yes, Honorable Daresa Mulunda?
Thank you, Chair. You know, when you explain a lot, you end up putting water in your soup. Me, I just said, how much? I mean, so that's all. So I've seen even, is it because of the reverend? You have lost business on on levies, on permits? On permits? You're supposed to collect four thousand. That was your budget on that sector. But you have collected two hundred, which you have seen that? On permit?
That is called, because we have several revenue lines, Chair, under that one. Okay, that is heberlist payment where we budgeted four thousand and we have just collected two hundred, I've seen.
That's what I'm saying. The reverend is doing something. He's lost business.
Now I'm able to follow, Honorable.
Thank you. Yes, Honorable Dr. Mwaza?
I still go back to the, to page nine and the Appendix B, B seven. I'm concerned when I have looked at the building inspection report conducted for twenty twenty-three. So if we just go to the, to the building inspection report on Appendix B, and yes, so when officers inspected these developments and they came up with this report, the findings and the comments, you can just sample through, just pick on any. You find that all the thirty-eight, none of them adhered to the regulations. No certificate of ownership of property, no consent from the council to develop and also no building plans. So you find a bricklayer or contractor is building, but there is no plan. That plan was, if it is a plan, the plan was not submitted to the council for approval to have that consent of developing. And so the general result, which council is dealing with the developers, is as you can see on the table, the last is the comment. Almost all of them have been served with the letters of others like number five. The applicant was advised to pay the necessary fees to the council. Other comments, all these, after the applicant has not yet paid the required fees, the developer was issued a stop order, notice and wait for further notice. Like developer number fourteen, this, the location is at government complex. And the developer is building a standalone house currently at ring beam level. And the action from the council is that she was told to stop building until further notice. The other one, number fifteen, the developer was penalized and was advised to submit building plans for scrutiny. So all these comments, of course, they don't stand well to the community. They have looked at the development levels they have reached. People have spent to ring beam level, others roofing already. And from the comments, it shows that all of them should stop developing. What is the immediate action from the council pertaining to the prevailing situation of Chipandi Panda development activities that are ongoing in Zimba? Based on your inspection report?
What is Chipandi Panda, Honorable Member?
Yes, yes, you're guided development.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. With your indulgence, allow me to recognize Honorable Member of Parliament, Chair, for my particular concerns. Chair, the question, we have consulted a development control task force and has since attached a vehicle purely for this exercise. So currently, that is what is on the ground. Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Mulunda?
We appreciate the thoughts and probably what we are seeing on the report, we started sparing. But I wanted to find out, Council Secretary, Zimba strategically located on the highway. Two things would thrive, two things would bring money to the local authorities. Do you have the council guest house or lodge? Do you have the council track park? Because, you know, somebody stays at his meeting at the Gozungoro for two days. So he wants to be away from noise. They would prefer come and park at your place and just relax before they proceed. Do you have a track park?
Yes, Council Secretary, you may respond.
Thank you, Chair. We have a council lodge called the Trakers Lodge. And also, Chair, we have a track parking yard which is quite big to with a capacity of about hundred tracks. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Dr. Mwaza?
We go to page ten of your submission. At the time of audit, there was unspent funds of one hundred and sixteen thousand six fifteen. And these funds, the explanation is that the unspent funds were for ongoing activities that were utilized, one zero six, three forty-nine was for ongoing activities. Whereas two thousand one hundred and fifty-four was for maintaining the account, account maintenance fee, whereas the balance was for sum up shop. What ongoing activities were at these that would be, would have hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and fifteen thousand to be supported? I want just a general description of the activities.
Thank you, Chair.
Stone Clack?
Thank you so very much. Allow me, Chair, to call upon Director Finance to highlight on the concern. Thank you.
Director Finance?
Thank you very much, Chair. So in a nutshell, like we have indicated, Chair, in our action taken, the smallest component, Chair, was reserved for restocking of the sum up shop. Then also, the other component was actually meant for maintenance of accounts for the, for the, we have some accounts for the, we opened accounts for all the work development committees. So the other component, then the major component, Chair, before the year ended, we had some, committed some funds towards the same commercial ventures in terms of food and also rehabilitation works. Then before the year ended, we also had committed some funds toward the payments of salary advances to our employees. That is in a nutshell, we have gone further, Chair, to attach the payment vouchers to show where the monies were actually expended. I think that evidence is on Appendix C, that is C one. We have attached some payment vouchers, Chair. Thank you very much, Chair.
Honorable Dr. Mwaza?
In your verbal explanation, you talked about this to support these commercial ventures in terms of the logistics as well as rehabilitation. When I've perused through the payment vouchers, I don't see anything related to rehabilitation works on these commercial ventures. All the receipts are just going towards logistics in form of logistics for meetings and so on and so forth. So are you telling me that the unspent funds, part of the unspent funds, through your confirmation in your verbose presentation, part of the money was not meant for rehabilitation of those commercial ventures?
Yes, Director Finance?
Thank you very much, Chair. So on the same payment vouchers we have attached, that is on C one, I'm actually able to see patches of, that is stocks for the commercial ventures. In terms of activity, we have indicated the beer. On others, in terms of activity, that is a purpose. We have also indicated the foodstuffs and cleaning materials and also fewer chairs for actually patches of the same foodstuffs. As you go on, Chair, you'll also be able to see a payment voucher that is amounting to four thousand one hundred and sixty, that was meant for labor. The other one that follows, Chair, was also meant for labor, even the other one, Chair. So you discover that several of them were actually meant for maintenance, Chair, and also restocking the same commercial ventures, Chair. Thank you very much, Chair. I submit.
Thank you so much. We go to page eight. Activity number two, public health inspection. Your target was to inspect one thousand nine hundred animals. At the time of audit, you inspected fifty. But your response is saying you inspected two thousand five hundred. Are you able to comment, Stone Clack?
Thank you, Chair.
At the time of audit, Chair, yes, the record was showing that 50 animals were inspected. From the time of audit, as an ongoing exercise, we continued so that by the end of the year, we had actually inspected 2,500 animals. So Chair, the number 50 was as at the time of audit. Then as we moved on, we realized a total number of animal inspections of 2,500, even performing more than the targeted figure. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. So my advice is that as you respond in future, you must acknowledge what the auditor finds and if you have taken action, state boldly and the end result. Unlike where you respond that the target was met, yet at the time of audit, which is the result, what was captured was 50 out of the 1,900. Again, I ask you to correct this.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge and we take note. And therefore, I wish to ask the August House to amend the same, to read that at the time of audit, the figure was 50 and then by the end of the year, we had actually achieved 2,500. Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Dr. Maza?
We go to page 12. Failure to establish firefighting services. There is no fire services at Zimba Town Council and we are depending on the partners to, other partners like, I think, Livingstone or something like that. But my point of gratification is in, you have trained one officer under the firefighting services and you have also retained two other officers. So the total, there should be three and you have no firefighting service. Why are you paying these people a salary for just sitting without providing a service? Because if fire erupts in Zimba, you get support from Livingstone. So in that firefighting machine, the whole crew is inside. Now your men, three of them, they are employed and they're getting a salary without providing a service. The second question is, have you planned to have a firefighting station in the near future, like 2025 or 2026? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The officers that have been highlighted here, they are with us. They also provide other services that are related to their function, such as inspection of some buildings in terms of fire certification and also other services that are related to their function. As to whether we have a plan, yesterday, we are a fire authority as Zimba Town Council and so we are underway in terms of bringing up some strategies so that we as well are provided with fire equipment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Council Secretary and your team. As we conclude the session, I want to sincerely thank you for your valuable information and engagement. The discussions held today have highlighted critical areas that require immediate and strategic actions to enhance fiscal performance, service delivery and overall governance. Some key takeaways. The underperformance in revenue collection despite your 97% budget performance calls for a review on how realistic your budget estimates are. The council must implement measures to bridge the gap between the projections and actual collections. The failure to dispose of unserviceable motor vehicles continues to pose a challenge. The council must expedite this disposal process and implement safeguards to prevent vandalism and loss of value of the property. The absence of firefighting equipment remains a concern. The council must prioritize resource mobilization and strategic partnerships to ensure that this essential service is provided to the community. Accountability and compliance. The failure to settle staff obligations, such as payments to ZDRA, NAPSa, has long-term consequences for both the council and its employees. A clear prepayment plan must be developed to ensure compliance. Outstanding staff obligations must be addressed with urgency as failure to do so negatively impacts on employee welfare and overall service efficiency. As we move forward, it is imperative that we uphold the principles of accountability, fiscal discipline and effective governance. The residents of Zimba expect and deserve quality service, delivery and it is our collective responsibility to ensure that we meet these expectations. And finally, I wish to withdraw the immunity that was conferred upon you. Whatever you now say after this, you are on your own. We have come to the end of the session. I hereby close the session officially. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. You are still watching Parliament Television. We continue bringing to you live committees and you are just from watching the committee on local government accounts in which they were receiving submissions from Zimba Town Council on the consideration of the report of the auditor general on the audit of the accounts of local authorities for the financial year ended 31st December 2023. And this committee earlier on did receive submissions from the town clerk, Mofulira Municipal Council. And later in the afternoon, we expect the committee to receive submissions from two witnesses. These are Pemba Town Council and Sinazonwe Town Council. My name is Matim Bamkua. On behalf of the entire production crew, keep watching Parliament Television. Remember, at about 14:30 hours, the committee on local government accounts will continue receiving submissions from the two witnesses which are you joining for today? Good afternoon.